Good evening, Oxnard. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. And tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates running for Oxnard City Council in District 6. There are actually three candidates running, but at the moment, we only have two. Before we begin, I want to go ahead and introduce the president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. I'm happy to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold the right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginnings and continuing today, the League is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Each of us has a voice in our government, but only if we use our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons of each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. This is your opportunity as voters to learn about the candidates and where they stand on issues important to you. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you have many of your questions answered. And please be sure to make a plan to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. Before we begin with our candidates, I want to take a moment to share with the audience the outline of the various districts within Oxnard. We are now going to hear from the candidates in District 6. District 6 is at the south end of Oxnard, and that covers the area. You can see on the map, south of the Oxnard, or let's say that would be Highway 1, down to almost the edge of Port Wainimi, the wetlands, that area. So we are, we want you to always, even if you don't live in the district, think about still watching these performances because we want you to know that these candidates represent the entire city. They are just strictly elected from District 6. With that, I will stop talking, and we will begin our opening statements. Our first candidate is VNA Lopez. When you're ready, VNA, one and a half minutes.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum an opportunity to reach the greater Ventura County community about the important issues happening in Oxnard. I have been representing District 6 as a council member since the first election to the district in 2018. In this short period of time, I have been working with my colleagues to address some very challenging issues in our city with the budget, short-term rentals, issues with cannabis. And now, as we have all been feeling the impacts and the effects of COVID-19, how this has been another issue that has been at the forefront of our conversations and what happens in the recovery phase. As a lifelong resident of Oxnard, I am proud to serve as a council member and bring the experience working with our locally-elected federal and state-elected officials, who, where I have gained the knowledge and experience about policy, constituent service, and how to creatively address and reach the needs of our residents. In this coming term, for the next four years, I look forward to working on furthering the issues and concerns of our residents in South Oxnard as they relate to our greater city and to work with my colleagues to continue to serve our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Carolina Gallardo Magana.
Hi, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Ventura County for having us here. My name is Carolina Gallardo Magana, and I am an immigrant. I am a woman of color. I am indigenous. I am a former farm worker. And I want to represent District 6, which is South Oxnard. Because in the last 30 years, I haven't seen every representation for the people we represent. So it's time to have a real representation in Oxnard. In 2018, it was the very first time that the city was divided by district, and we got somebody to represent us. And I thought, great, we have somebody who will be representing the people. I have to say, I haven't seen that representation in our community, and that's why I'm here, running again, to represent the hard-working families in South Oxnard. In the last two, in the last two years at least, I have done reading at a park in 2019, and we closed that with a book, a book fair at the park. Also, I am in a process of having a park on Questa del Mar. And this will have youth programs and also for all residents in general. And this will benefit the South Oxnard residents, and everybody will be, is welcome. Also, this year, we installed an air quality monitor at Hay Cox Elementary School. And that was supposed to be at Wainimi Elementary School, but I regret for that to be moved.
Thank you, Carolina. Good enough to stop you there.
Okay.
But we will give you the chance to go first on the next question. And this one is, share with us, Carolina, your thoughts and plans for upgrading the south end of Oxnard?
The south end of Oxnard, the quality of life is not what residents deserve. If you come to South Oxnard, you will see how our streets, our infrastructure is really turned down. Right now, I am working in collaboration with the county to beautify the Schumacher Creek, better known as J Street Canal, and that is in progress already. And like I mentioned before, I am a co-founder of a park on Questa del Mar to benefit the youth. We will have art classes and many other project gardening for the betterment of South Oxnard residents. And I'm advocating for equity, social equity in South Oxnard. One of them will be to have all the information from the city translated to Spanish and other languages that are spoken in the area. So those are my priorities. Also, we need more environmental justice in South Oxnard. We have the Gem of Oxnard, which is on Mon Beach, and we need to take care of that. We need to take care of the homeless people living in that area. We need to find a safe place for them to live, to have a hot meal, and to have a safe place where to sleep. So we need to work in collaboration with other organizations to have this come true. Thank you.
Thank you. And VNA, same question to you. What are your plans to upgrade the south end of Oxnard?
Thank you, David. So one of the areas that we actually started working on earlier this year is focused around the Savior's Road corridor, where we have a large influx of businesses, small businesses, large businesses. Earlier this year, it started at the end of last year. I, along with the city manager, started meeting with the three largest commercial business owners, the three largest commercial centers along Saviors, to talk about ways that we can improve this area. This is our main corridor into South Oxnard, not just for District 6, but for District 5 and the entire south end of the city. And there is a great need to improve and address the issues around homelessness, business, business and economic development, which will really feed into improving our housing, the maintenance of the rest of our city, our parks. And it will begin with this. And through these conversations, we began the process of looking into and putting forward a plan to create a community benefits district that will help to improve the activity along this main corridor, as well as create a public space that we are calling a socalo, that will be open and inviting to all of our residents as a commonplace, where we can come together and focus on the great culture that we have in South Oxnard.
Thank you. VNA will start the next question with you. District 6 does border the Ormond Wetlands. What are your plans to reduce trash, provide safe access? What's your vision for Ormond Beach?
Well, I'm very proud that earlier, actually, just like about a month ago, a month and a half ago, we came as a council, I worked with my colleagues, as well as my colleague on the south end, Ms. Basua. We went in front of the state water board to request an extension of the Genon Power Plant. And through this extension, what we are getting in return is the formation of a trust fund that will bring $25 million that will be used to dismantle the Ormond Power Plant, which is a monument that we do not need on our beach. And through this effort and the efforts of the Coastal Conservancy, the Nature Conservancy, to create a plan that will revive the life in the wetlands, will all come together. And it will take some time, but it is through that collaboration, as we partner with others to, including our neighboring city of Port Wainimi, to maintain the beach and the wetlands clean. And this will bring back not only life to the wetlands, but also will allow us, as residents in Oxnard, to reclaim our beach and this public space that is a jewel for all of us, as well as potential tourists who come to our city.
Thank you, Carolina. Same question to you. As far as your plans to reduce trash, provide safe access, what is your vision for the Ormond Wetlands?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, that we have the Gem of Oxnard here in, right behind my backyard. For now, I'm just helping to do cleanups here and there, and I'm also working very close with some organizations, like Friends of Ormond Beach and City of Port Wainimi. But once I can get the votes to have the seat, I will work in collaboration with many other agencies. We have the Ormond Beach right there, that we have to take care of, the lagoon. But not just that, we also have the halico plant, the superfund plant, toxic site, that has to be removed from there to have a better access to the beach in a safe way for all residents. And we could bring revenues to the city if we promote that as a touristic spot. So definitely, that would be my plan to work in collaboration with other colleagues to remove the halico plant from there and beautify Ormond Beach Lagoon.
Thank you. Carolina, we'll stay with you for the next question. We're going to take a look at an issue that's a problem throughout Oxnard, but especially in the south side, is the issue of traffic and moving that and parking issues. Do you have any plans or steps you want to take to try and alleviate the traffic issues and the parking problems?
Definitely. Parking problem comes with crowdedness problem. So first of all, we have to take care of the crowdedness that we have in South Oxnard, and that is finding ways for affordable housing for residents. So if we don't have the crowd, if we are not crowded as we are right now, so we will not have that parking issue. So we will have to work in collaboration with other agencies to solve that issue of affordable housing. And once on the chair, that's what I will do. My priority will have to work towards affordable housing for residents, and that will alleviate the parking issues.
Thank you. VNA, your thoughts about solving some of the parking and the traffic issues in District 6?
Yeah, so parking has definitely been an issue, and there's certain areas within the city that have a greater concentration of residents. The density is higher, and that's where we see a lot of these parking issues. South Oxnard isn't, isn't the only one facing this. And we've seen that every neighborhood, we cannot, we can't apply a plan across the board for every neighborhood to address the parking issue. We have to look at every neighborhood differently. In South Winds, the southmost end neighborhood, we saw conversations and suggestions that came from residents about what they wanted to see, whether it was a permit program where each household received a certain number of permits for parking on the street. And that doesn't quite work out in every space when we have a lot of high density. So we do need to evaluate in each neighborhood where the opportunities are to implement a parking program that will be distributed and meet the needs of all our families, our working families. But in addition to that, we do have a high number of housing units that we will need to meet in the next 10 years as part of the housing element. So the increase in housing is going to be spread out through the city, and that's where we can find those opportunities to help relieve the density in certain neighborhoods.
And you both have mentioned housing, so let's go ahead and spend a little time on this question. What are your plans as far as improving the housing situation? Is there a particular mix of housing that you prefer? Do you prefer apartments, mobile home, is it single-family residences? So share with us your vision about bringing affordable, quality homes to South Oxnard. VNA?
Okay, I thought so. Yes, you know, we have to evaluate our city. There is no more room for us to be growing out, to be growing out into the outskirts of the city. So we have to look at these infill opportunities to provide the reasonable housing, market rate housing, affordable housing, that will meet the various needs of the, of our population. That can be mixed use, which I think is probably one of the better ways to increase the housing stock and looking at our main corridors where we do have the public transportation as a way to, to allow to feed that into, feed into the public transportation system. But also looking at, you know, earlier, we've gone through a number of updates and changes to improve the accessory dwelling units that are, that are already increasing the number of housing spaces for our families. So there's a variety of options that we need to look at. And again, looking at the uniqueness of every neighborhood and what fits there, looking at our main corridors, our main roads, to feed into that process rather than continuing to build out.
Thank you. Carolina, same question to you. As far as your strategies, your ideas about how to solve and bring in the appropriate kinds of housing, what type of housing do you prefer?
I wish we could have like single-home families for everybody in South Oxnard. Unfortunately, I think there is not enough space to have those type of residents. But I would say, I forget the name of it, it just went away, but something where the apartments can be on top and maybe businesses in the bottom. So something, I know this is something that we may not be able to make it come true, but we can work towards it. Another day, I was walking and thinking, how can we solve the issue of parking in, at least in my neighborhood? But thinking of the entire city for sure. What about over-roof parking? I don't know. That's maybe a dream, but it may come true if we work hard for it. So, but definitely, I think we have to look at the, at the angles of each neighborhood and of each area of Oxnard.
Okay, I think you were maybe looking for the word mixed use?
Mixed use, yes.
Carolina, we're going to go ahead and stay with you for the next question. Share with us your view about cannabis coming to Oxnard, your views about cannabis dispensaries, selling it. If you think there's particular policies, please try and be as specific as you can about how you want to see cannabis sold in Oxnard.
Well, first of all, we have to look and see and protect our kids, for sure. Last year, there was a plantation of cannabis, right here on Wainimi Road, right here by my backyard, and I can smell it all the way. So I think planting the cannabis somewhere out of the, out of the area or the surrounding of the area where people cannot smell it, especially our kids. It was tough for me to see a kid like kind of making the sign of smoking the weed when that smell was very strong. And on the other side for the dispensaries, it would be good if we check and see that they are not nearby the schools. That would be my priority, not to have them nearby the school, but it could be a good thing for revenues for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, VNA, same question to you. What are your thoughts and plans about bringing cannabis to Oxnard? What's the right balance?
Yes, well, this is, this process has been well underway since last year. As a, as a council, we approved the ordinances to, to allow retail distribution in the city. And very recently, as part of that, even discussing the social equity component of cannabis and what it means, the history of cannabis in our, in our country, and who has been marginalized, which has been our Latino, Black, African-American communities. And, and they should be part of this, of this now legal system in having sales, in having distribution. And as part of that, we did discuss where, where we should allow these, these retail sites, these distribution sites, these manufacturing sites, because we are concerned about the well-being of our youth, of our community. And through that, we did find a balance of the limit, the distance that we would have, the buffer zones, including schools, including hospitals, including sensitive areas to protect our youth. This is an opportunity that we need to take advantage as a city, not just to bring in the revenue, but to allow our business community to participate in this industry.
Thank you. Throughout Oxnard, homelessness is a problem. And your solutions, you could address the entire city. There's also a specific issue with homelessness around the Ormond Beach area and the superfund site. VNA, you're up first. Please share with us your concrete steps and plans to try and deal with homelessness, both citywide and specifically those areas in District 6 or nearby.
Absolutely. So homelessness is definitely a big concern. It's something that no one can avoid because it's very noticeable throughout our entire city. And through this, we have moved forward in the process to build out a shelter that would be more than a place for those, those people who are homeless to spend the night, but having a full wraparound service that will help to treat mental health, healthcare, transition, job opportunities. I mean, we can't just have a shelter that keeps, keeps people in the system, but looking at a way to transition. And with this shelter that, that is potentially going to be located in downtown Oxnard, this will be a great opportunity to help really directly serve, and more than that, see people transition out of homelessness because this navigation center will include more than just an overnight shelter, but permanent housing that will be used as transition. Through that, our police department does have officers who are specifically serving and meeting the needs to help those who are homeless to respond to the calls as residents are concerned, but also to help in that transition and bringing those services that are needed.
Thank you. Carolina, same question to you. What are your plans, concrete steps you'd like to see taken to deal with the homelessness problem, citywide and also in the areas bordering or part of District 6, like the superfund side in Ormond?
Definitely, homeless issues is not just around the city, it's like all over, all over. But I would love to see something happening because I think that there are two types. One who is a homeless by choice, and somebody who's a homeless by not other choice, but being a homeless. And also working with people with special needs. We have a lot of mental issues out there. And many people are not realizing or not thinking rationally. I would love to have, to work in collaboration with healthcare agencies to help these individuals to, to be in a safe place, to transition eventually, to be more independent, but in a safe way. In Ormond Beach, we have a lot of homeless, and I know the city is working on a shelter for 130 beds, and I think that is not enough, definitely. If we need more than 130 beds, I would love to see an extension somewhere else, perhaps, maybe there, but to house more than 130 people who are homeless right now. But eventually, transition to be on their own, if we can find job opportunities for them with assistance of any other agencies or in collaboration with, we can make this happen. Thank you.
You're welcome. Carolina, we'll stay with you. Let's talk a little bit about business. Now, we've seen River Park developed in the north end. We've heard lots of talk about downtown. But as far as bringing business, jobs, shopping, entertainment to the south end, please share with us your vision. There has been a proposal about a socalo, the old Center Point Mall. But Carolina, if you're elected, tell us what you will work on, what do you want to see happen, what is your vision?
My vision is, and even now, not being an elected official, I'm being talking to the small businesses in the South Oxnard corridors, which is Saviors, Cal Giessler, Wainimi Road. I'm being talking to them. And it's so hard for them to, for them to survive. They are thriving, as I mentioned before, not in this forum, but in another forum. Some of them have to pay $5,000 to the city just for their license. So they are thriving right now, especially during this pandemic. So I would love to have a small business association and let's help, let's help them to overcome their difficulties. And then also, why not promote South Oxnard? Like I said, we have the Gem of Oxnard here, Ormond Beach. Let's promote it as a touristic place. Let's bring businesses. I just heard Amazon is coming, but it's on the north side of Oxnard. I would love to see something coming to this side where we'll enhance more Oxnard.
Thank you. VNA, that's your thoughts about the development of new business and entertainment opportunities in South Oxnard? What is your vision?
Yeah, and I had talked about the formation of a community benefits district that would allow to invest a little bit more in, in the commercial businesses along Savior's Road, which would help to also create this, this open space. We have Ormond Beach, and with the dismantling of this, the power plant, which is, is going to be a few years away, but this will be also an opportunity to, to develop that area as a possible tourist destination. And then in conjunction to that, we have the Ormond Beach Restoration Plan that has been, has been in the process with a lot of community partners working on that. And that is a way for us to reclaim South Oxnard, the opportunities for tourism, but also for our residents. Right now, with COVID, we first need to look at supporting and ensuring that our businesses are going to be able to survive through this, through this pandemic. And we have partnered with the Economic Development Collaborative, who is serving business owners right now to ensure that they are able to keep their doors open and keep, keep their business, business running. Those are the types of partnerships that we need to continue on specifically right now before we can look at further economic development in Oxnard.
Okay, thank you. One of the issues that confronts many of the communities along California is the coastline and climate change, rising sea levels, and not just that, but there's also more wildfires. Can you share with us the policies that you think the city should be taking proactively to adapt to climate change? And also, if there are policies you think that the city can take to curb emissions?
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. I think it's, it's in everything. You know, we can't just think of where we are right now, but looking ahead at, at the way that we're doing, we're doing business. Because every policy that we're adopting right now is going to have a longer, a long-term impact. When we talk about transportation and the congestion of automobiles on our roads. Last year, we had a presentation by an executive who came and talked about the transition of mobility and what it will mean to, to have roads that are set up in a way that we have fewer cars, where people don't need to own cars. That is probably one of the main ways that we see the pollution in our city. And it is through those policies, even within our city, and the way that our own vehicles are, are functioning to ensure that they, they are emitting less, less pollution, eventually reaching, reaching zero. There are partnerships that we need to have with the, with the Port of Wainimi, with the number of ships that come into, into our city, into our, into our neighboring city, as well as the county with, with everything that we're doing, working with the Air Resources Board to evaluate where these emissions are, are higher and specifically addressing them in those areas to reduce that.
Thank you. Carolina, what are your thoughts about helping the city to adapt to climate change? That could be rising seas and everything else, and also policies to curb emissions? Please share with us your thoughts.
Okay, I would say that we need to work in collaboration with the county, with the state agencies to better protect the residents. And then also, we have to take care of like the pesticides that are being used in our fields and then the emissions that are being, you know, on our roads. So definitely, there are a lot of things to look at, but working in collaboration and looking for, for funds from the state and federal agencies, but definitely will be a collaboration work.
Okay. Carolina, we'll start the next question with you. And let's step back from the policy things and learn a little bit. And let's step back from the policy things and learn a little bit more about each of you. Carolina, what do you think makes you the best candidate for this job? What would be some of your priorities if you're elected? What do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Okay, I think what makes me qualified for this chair is not seeing the real representation that we need in South Oxnard. We always see people who probably mean good for the community, but they are not really there to advocate for them. Not being on the chair, I have had people coming to me and asking me who is representing us. And I do tell them, they don't know who this person is. So that says a lot. And like I said, in 2018, I was not planning to run again. It's stressful to run a campaign. But when I see the need of my people asking to be represented, so that's why I'm here, because I fully understand the struggles of people of South Oxnard. Like I said before, I am a former part worker and I know what it is to live paycheck to paycheck. And I know what it is to live without a representation. I know what it is not to have a voice in the city. I know what it is to be neglected. So that's why I'm here, for us to have a representation in South Oxnard. And of course, the vision of the whole city, but that's why, that's why I'm here, because we don't have a representation that South Oxnard residents need and deserve.
Thank you. V and A, what do you think makes you well qualified for this job? What are some of your priorities if you're elected? What sets you apart?
Thank you, David. For the past 10 years, I have been dedicated to public service. I have gained experience working for elected officials to understand how it is that our federal government works with local government, to understand how our state works with local government, what the policies and how these policies are made and how they trickle down to our residents. I sat on the Wayne Me Elementary School District Board for six years before I was elected to City Council. That was a time where I saw how our parents, families, how our children are growing and the environment that they are growing in. I bring in this experience because serving on City Council isn't just about being out in the public. A lot of that work happens behind closed doors, behind with conversations and looking and reviewing the information and the issues. And that is the experience that I bring to serve our communities, not just in South Oxnard, but our entire city. The issues that come before us aren't just about one neighborhood. We are taking action that is impacting our entire city for the long run. The issues that I hope to work, continue working on is to continue investing more in our youth as they are the ones growing and making this place a thriving community for all of us. And through that, looking at the housing and presence of our community policing in our city.
Thank you. V and A, we'll stay with you. I think you sort of anticipated the next question. And that's about the position on youth programs. So both of you, but we'll start with V and A. What do you think should be the city's offering? What can the city do to get young people more engaged in city and community activities? What plans do you have for citywide and also your district?
Yeah, you know, that's one of the areas that absolutely our youth are vital. And it is what we do right now, the way that we serve them and the programs that we offer, that's how, that's who we can expect will be a part of this city in the future. The city has been providing a number of programs, partnering with our school districts to provide the after-school services. And through this pandemic, that has been a greater challenge in how we meet those needs. Further, working through the Police Activities League, those mentorship programs and opportunities to grow and learn through experience and working. We have, we have different needs that we are trying to meet and we need to continue investing, not just for our youth today, but how we create a plan for the future. So I do hope to continue working with our Recreation Department, who has been meeting so many needs through this pandemic. And we have an amazing staff who is out there every day, who has led school supply fairs to serve our neediest children, who is having recreation programs in our parks and even meeting the needs of our seniors in our community.
Thank you. And Carolina, same question to you. As far as ideas, strategies you have to engage the youth, what do you think the city should offer? How can they become more engaged in city and community activities?
I think we have to get to know the needs of each neighborhood. I think we don't, like if I intend to represent you, meaning the community, I should know what a community wants. Right now, I am working in a survey, asking the residents what they want to see, what programs want to see for the youth. And like I mentioned before, for the South Oxnard area, I am working, or I am the co-founder of a project called Pocket Park, which will be on Cuesta del Mar, which is one of the most dense area. And that will be a habbing program for the youth and program for the señoras, meaning for the mothers. So I think to me, we need to work in collaboration with other organizations, but definitely knowing what the community needs, what the community wants. And that really shows the engagement.
Thank you. Carolina, we'll stay with you for the next question. Let's talk about the city's budgeting, the financial challenges the city has had. One of the things the city is proposing is the Measure E, which would be a new or additional sales tax. So tell us about what you think you would want to see happen as far as managing the city's budget and the finances, and also share with us your position on Measure E.
Okay, well, I would like to see more clear accountabilities for the city finances, that's definitely. On Measure E, I am not a fan of raising taxes. Our community really suffers a lot, especially during this pandemic. I have to say, I am not in favor of Measure E. We have to look at many, many aspects of raising taxes. Our community really struggles. Yes, it is possibly a good thing in the future, but not right now. And this one doesn't have an end date, when this one will end. So I don't support Measure E. But if it passes, I would like to see that money being invested in the infrastructure and then also having clear accountabilities and also where the money is going to be spent and watching closely that money is spent, what is mean, I'm sorry, what is supposed to be spent.
Okay, thank you. V and A, same question to you. As far as the city's finances, do you think that there's policies that should be put in place to manage that better? And also Measure E, do you support or oppose that and why?
Absolutely. So having gone through a budget cycle last year for the 2019-20 budget year, it was a heartbreaking and very challenging process to go through, especially as a first, in my first year on the council. It was a realization that our city is not in a very positive financial situation, when we had to cut $9 million just to make it even. With the pandemic, we are in no better position. And we were able to not cut anything further, but we definitely were not able to invest and move some of these programs forward. We have low maintenance of parks and public spaces. Our roads are being worked on, but they need further improvement. And that is something that is very noticeable. So Measure E is an opportunity for us to bring back services, to bring back employees who we unfortunately had to let go last year because of the budget. I don't want to be in this position in a few months if Measure E doesn't pass. So I do support Measure E to ensure that we bring back these needed services and meet every need throughout the city as much as possible. It's not going to be the solution, but it is going to help us, help us through, with $40 million a year to meet those needs.
Thank you. V and A, we'll take the next question. We'll start with you. And this one is something that I've been asking around the county. It comes up all the time. That's the issue about racial injustice, social inequality, Black Lives Matter, defunding the police. Can you share with us your views, what should happen at a city level to try and remove racial inequality? And your views on defunding the police and supporting Black Lives Matter, those types of things? Please share with us your thoughts.
Thank you, David. This has been another very emotional conversation that I think many of us are having in our own personal spaces. And when it comes to the public, it was one that I had a hard time even speaking because of the emotional impact of what we see, the racial injustices happening throughout our entire country. And it was through that, that I requested and worked on a resolution condemning police brutality. This was a resolution that received input and suggestions from our police chief. Because our department understands that there have been injustices and that that we can work together to protect our residents, to provide some safety. And when we address and acknowledge that there is an issue, that is the first step in moving forward to evaluate and identify the areas where we can make improvements. Defunding the police is a hot topic and conversation that is coming up. And our police officers recognize that they have had to take on more responsibilities, more duties to address homelessness as many other issues. And that is where the conversation begins about how we can distribute the services and response that police officers are giving to address that. Thank you.
Okay. Carolina, same question to you. Share with us your thoughts about trying to remove the racial injustices that may exist, defunding the police, Black Lives Matter. Share with us your perspectives.
Yes, you know, we've been working very close with other organizations and racial injustice definitely is a big issue right now. Not just in our city, but nationwide. I would like to work in collaboration with other agencies, organizations, to make sure that doesn't happen in our city. In regards to the police, I will, I will, I hope that the police funds are be directed to create other programs for youth, or perhaps for domestic violence victims, for any other crime that we have to evaluate, how many calls the police department receives in certain areas, like if there is a lot of calls on domestic violence, they have somebody to to take care of, like a program within the police department for our youth. Many other things that community needs. And then, I'm sorry, I forgot the last part of your question.
Just your views on race and social inequality?
Social inequality, okay. Definitely, we have that in South Oxnard, like I mentioned before. One of the social equity will be like if we have all documents translated in Spanish and other languages that residents speak. So there will be some sort of social equity in our area.
Okay, thank you. Candidates, this will be our last question. Going to start with you, Carolina. And this is about another measure that is on the ballot for Oxnard residents. And that's Measure L, which changes the power given to the city treasurer and city finance departments. Assuming you're familiar with it, can you share with us your position on Measure L and why?
And Measure L, I think there are many sides of that measure that we have to really take a look at it. And there is a lot of information to be observed, to be compared, you know, one to another and make sure that we make the right decision. And I hope all residents make the right decision on voting on Measure L. And that's my hope, that people make the right decision on Measure L.
Okay. And V and A, share with us your position on Measure L. Does it give too much power to the city treasurer? Or does it restore checks and balances? What's your position and why?
Thank you. Considering that a treasurer is an elected position and the qualifications for for anyone to run for treasurer would be that you're 18 years old and that you are registered to vote. To me, that is not sufficient enough to give someone so much power about the the financial and budgetary issues of our city. So I do not support Measure L because we need to have that separation of power to have someone who is screened, who is professionally trained to understand how to manage the financials of our city. This would be a detriment to our community. So I do not support Measure L.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to both candidates. We're now going to begin our closing statements. Again, for the audience, I remind you that there is a third candidate, and that is Carla Alejandra Ramirez. She was unable to join us tonight. We're now going to do our closing statements. We'll begin in the reverse order. We will give Carolina a minute and a half. And whenever you're ready, Carolina, please begin your closing statement.
Okay, well, thank you for having us here tonight. And thank you to everybody for listening. Let's vote November 3rd for the right person, for the right choice. I am always here in the community. And then I have invested in South Oxnard. I have lived in South Oxnard for the past 30 years. And I came to this country with my empty hands. I was full of dreams, but my empty hands. When I came to this country, I didn't know how to speak a word in English. So I have to learn it. I was 23 years old when I came. So at that age, and with all the responsibilities, it's hard for us as immigrants to learn the language. But I learned it because I wanted to succeed. I never, I never thought I will be asking to represent the people of South Oxnard. But here I am, after being a field worker. And I am a woman of color. I am indigenous and I'm here to serve my community. I have my own business in South Oxnard. I work for people with special needs. I own properties in South Oxnard, definitely. I have invested in South Oxnard. I am a mother of three, I'm sorry, I'm a mother of four, grandma to three. So vote for Carolina Gallardo Magaña. And for more information, visit my webpage, which is carolinaforoxnard.com. Thank you. And please vote November 3rd.
Thank you. Our next candidate is V and A Lopez.
Thank you, David. And thank you to the League of Women for hosting this forum. It is an opportunity that allows us to share a little bit more about ourselves. And I know that it's not enough time. I am someone who has grown up in the same neighborhood where I currently live. This is where my family came when we immigrated here in 1991. We came here because we wanted to be in a better position. And that is an opportunity that I am so proud to have, to serve as a council member, to represent the diversity of needs for District Six, but the entire city of Oxnard. I am here committed to hear and listen, to first and foremost, hear and listen to the issues that are affecting our everyday families, that are affecting our our community and how we can work together to thrive. I am proud to have the support of a diverse number of organizations, including firefighters, the Chamber of Commerce, our frontline workers, grocery workers, who are putting their lives on the line to serve all of us. And having this support to me means that I can continue working and collaborating and having those partnerships to continue to serve our residents of Oxnard. And I hope to have the support of those of you out there. I'm so thankful to those supporters who are currently watching, especially my family, for continuing in this path to serve Oxnard.
Thank you. Thank you to both candidates. I just want to take a moment to thank our volunteers at the League. That includes Maddie, Ruby, Betsy, Cheryl, and Pat. And we will take a moment here to share a special presentation from the League about voting. And see if this will work. Here we go. So this is a reminder that everybody in California that's registered to vote will receive a mail-in ballot. You should have those now, or they should be here in the next few days. You can return those by mailing them at any postal service location, or you can drop them off at a ballot box that are secure around the county. You can also drop it off at a voting center that'll be opening up a few days before the election. So one of the things that we want to tell you about is that if you do not receive your ballots by October 16, please contact the Elections Division to make sure they get you one in time. Now, the League recommends that if you are returning your ballots by mail, that you get them into the post office by October 20. That'll give them sufficient time to get them over to the That'll give them sufficient time to get them over to the Elections Department for counting on election night. Now, it's important to remember that as long as a ballot is postmarked by November 3rd, it will still be counted up to 17 days after the election. However, I'm sure we all want to see those ballots get in early and get counted. But it does remind us that since it will take an extra two weeks to count, that we may not know results on election night. We may not know that for several days locally and across the country, maybe even a week or two. There's some excellent resources if you're interested. Where'smyballot.sos.ca.gov is a website where you can put in your information. And then the Secretary of State's website will let you know where your ballot is. Has it been returned to the post office? Has it been forwarded to the elections? Has it been in the counting queue? All of those things. Votersedge.org is a place where you can put in your address and learn more about other candidates running in your area. So you can find out about ballot propositions as well, read their profiles, learn about them. And finally, the League of Women Voters reminds you about our website, lvwventuracounty.org. Same place you went to register for tonight's forum. You can go there, click on Candidate Forums, see all of our candidate forums. You can go back and watch any of the videos. This one will be posted within about 24 hours. You can also register for upcoming forums. Next week on Monday, we'll be hosting a forum for the two treasurer candidates in Oxnard. And on Tuesday night, we'll be hosting a forum with congressional candidates, Julia Brownlee and Rhonda Kennedy. You can register for those by visiting our website. With that, again, I'd like to thank our candidates, thank our volunteers. I'm David Merron with the League of Women Voters, reminding you to vote. And also reminding you that if you are mailing in a ballot, make sure you sign the outside of the envelope. That also is very important. Thank you, everyone, and good night.